Call this meeting of the City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilmember Fowler.
Over here.
Councilmember Kern.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. If I could get your attention real quick, we're going to begin with the invocation by Pastor Obashar. Please stand.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Openshaw. I am the senior pastor at Lighthouse Christian Church in Oceanside, here for 25 years, which gives me the distinction of being the guy who turns out the lights and locks the doors, as the last person to leave. So it's an honor to be with you tonight. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, it is such a blessing to live in this beautiful community, and we thank you for that. We recognize you as the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you for those who come tonight to give of their time, to lead, to make decisions, to handle difficult situations. So we ask for your divine guidance and wisdom as those decisions are made, and that all who speak here tonight might show respect for one another and for you, and realize we're all part of this greater community, and if we work together, we can make this a better place. So we thank you for your love, and we thank you for your mercy, and most of all, we thank you for your grace and your forgiveness abundantly given through your Son, Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
And if we could have the Miss Teen Oceanside and Miss Oceanside come down and lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, if you'd like to invite your courts down with you. So I will present you with a proclamation recognizing you and your achievements, and give you an opportunity to say a little bit about what it is that you do.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We are your Miss and Miss Teen Oceanside Court 2017, and as what we do is we become goodwill ambassadors for the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, and we represent the Oceanside Sea Lions Club, and Lauren, can I say something?
We attend community events throughout the year that we love attending. We've served, we participate in community service, and we represent our city.
Well, thank you very much for all that. At this time, I'd like to invite Colleen and Teresa Gomez and their team to come down So I will present you the proclamation, Colleen, and ask you to say a few words about what events we have coming up.
Great, thank you. Good evening. It is Earth Month 2018, our ninth annual Earth Month event. We've got over a dozen events in the next several weeks to celebrate our planet Earth. We have the Earth Festival this weekend, and we also have a lot of other great opportunities, such as our Clean Up Day and our Loma Alta Creek event coming up on the 21st. And there's some great contests going on. In particular, we are participating for the first time this year with our Mayor Weiss in the Mayor's Challenge. It's a national challenge for sustainability and water conservation. So go to mywaterpledge.com to sign up and take the challenge with Mayor Weiss to protect our planet and save water. There's some great prizes available to people who sign up for the pledge, and there's also great benefits to the community. If Oceanside can have the most people pledging for the planet, we can really be recognized across the United States, and obviously, we're doing something good for the planet. So I'd like to thank our mayor, as well as our city council, as well as our Green Oceanside team for making these events possible. So please visit greenoceanside.org for more information about all the great things going on in your community this month.
Thank you.
I know the mayor has a Mayor's Challenge, but I think the challenge ought to be between Deputy Mayor and myself, because last month, I only used one unit of water.
He's probably gone all month somewhere else now.
Well, maybe we have to do that. One unit? Okay.
My fish uses that much.
I'll take the Mayor's Challenge. Jack used eight.
Mr. Mullen.
Okay, the City Council met earlier this afternoon to discuss Item 1 on the closed session agenda, the conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association. Council also met on Item 2A1, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of Kern versus City of Oceanside, 37201700036651. No relation to anyone on the dais. On both Item 1 and 2, there's no action to report under the Brown Act. There's no, there was no meeting on Item 3A.
Consent calendar?
Yes, consent calendar, Items 5 through 20.
Move approval.
No public.
I can't vote on Item 17.
Recusal on Item Number 17? Thank you very much.
All right, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0, with Deputy Mayor Lowry recusing on Item Number 17.
21.
Yes, Item Number 21 is authorization to award a contract in an amount not to exceed $1,080,245 to SandCon Technologies Incorporated of Huntington Beach for the Mesa Garrison Gravity Line Access Improvements and Cured-In-Place Lining Project. Approval to appropriate additional funds in the amount of $1 million from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Greg Kepler, Principal Water Engineer, Water Utilities Department. So the item we have before you this evening is to award a contract to SandCon Engineering in an amount not to exceed $1,080,245 to SandCon for the Mesa Garrison Gravity Line Sewer improvements and cure-in-place pipeline project. We're asking for appropriation of $1 million from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement once we have all the documents from the contractor. To give you a little bit of background on this project, last year, back in June, we selected IEC to conduct a condition assessment of three of the city's largest wastewater conveyance pipelines. And in September, they did a field reconnaissance on the pipeline in question, the Mesa Garrison Gravity Sewer Pipeline, and they concluded that it is in very poor condition and needs to be improved. Their recommendation was to install 2,600 linear feet of cured-in-place pipe to rehabilitate this pipe and avoid future spills, as well as construct manholes so we can access it and maintain it in the future, which it doesn't currently have. And in addition, we're currently in discussions with the Regional Quality Control Board regarding a pre-complaint settlement. And this pertains to the spill that we had in 2015, which was upstream, the spill that occurred at the intersection of Mesa Drive and Garrison Street. And they're viewing these in a positive way. If we are proactive in doing these repairs, it goes a long way towards helping us with this settlement. So this is the project location, just to get your bearing straight. So we go from left to right, moving from south to north. The project generally occurs within a larger SDG easement, which is where all the overhead power lines are, essentially just north of Mesa Street, to where SR 76 and Mission Avenue kind of cross, right near our Mission Avenue lift station. So those are the extents of the project. And as you can see, we're proposing to install manholes in the public right-of-way on surface So this is what the pipe looks like. This is before it's going to be cleaned and lined, and you can see it's in very poor And then this is what it looks like actually installing the cured-in-place pipe. So this is an image taken from the 2015 spill, the emergency repair, and that's the contractor installing the liner. And then this is what our pipe looks like after we installed the liner, so it's a vast So in December of last year, council authorized a city engineer to call for bids, and in February this year, we received two bids. We reviewed the bids and found that SandCon's bid met all the requirements, including their bid bond and references, and we anticipate that this work, once we get the contract documents from the contractor executed, that they can start at the end of this month or early next month, and it should take them approximately two months to complete the project. And because this is essentially a rehab of an existing pipe, this project is categorically Again, the total cost of this project is $1,080,245, and currently, our account only has $154,778. So we're requesting an increase of $1 million to cover the shortfall and cover any contingencies that might arise during construction, and we're recommending that the appropriation come from our Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, and this will provide sufficient funding to complete the project. In conclusion, our recommendation is to award a construction contract, $1,080,245 to SandCon to conduct the Mesa Garrison Access Improvements and Cure-In-Place Pipeline Project, appropriate $1 million from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with SandCon. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. It is unfortunate that we did have a failure. This certainly is a very, very critical project. I want to thank staff for acting so quickly in getting it fixed, and also in terms of making sure that this is the best way of ensuring that it's going to last us a while without any more failures. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
Councilmember Kern.
I'll second the motion. I just have a question. The last time we got involved with the Mesa Drive Sewer Project, we ended up chasing that pipe for almost 1,000 feet before we found a good pipe to hang on to. Are we looking at the same situation here? You know, are we going to, do you know what shape that's in? Are we going to be chasing pipe to find a good piece to start with?
Councilmember Kern, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, we believe what I showed in the photo is representative of what we expect to find along this entire alignment. Based on the recommendations that we received from IEC, they believe it's suitable to align. So once we actually get in there and do all the cleaning, we'll find out. There are contingencies in this contract to do spot repairs, so if there's some bad pipe that can't be lined, we'll actually install a section of new pipe in a spot. But this will take us all the way through the Mission Avenue Lift Station, which is the critical stretch. And then as part of, this is a kind of a sub-project that came out of their condition assessment work. We're expecting there's probably going to be more work in the future as a result of the analysis that they're doing. They're probably going to find more problems in the future, and we'll bring those forward as they come about. But this particular project, once this is done, we should be in really good shape, and this should last at least 40 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fowler.
Thank you. This is not a completed project. Sounded like Councilmember Sanchez was saying that this was completed, but this is a new project that, is it at the same level? Because that other one was 40 feet underground.
This is not nearly as difficult to access. This is in a much more accessible area. Part of the project that you're referring to, Councilmember Fowler, went through the tunnel. We have a tunnel, so it was very difficult to access. This is much easier. One of the things we will do on this project is provide additional access points, though. It's been very difficult to maintain these lines without access, and so we're constructing new manholes so our collection forces can get in there in the future and maintain these, which they haven't been able to do to date.
Well, after seeing that pipe, I think I'm going to give up candy bars.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Now move to speaking off of the agenda. We have one speaker on this item, Catherine Taylor.
Hi, I'm Catherine Taylor. I live at... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm Catherine Taylor. I live at 1750 Laurel Road in Oceanside. I'm here regarding California's sanctuary state policy, and specifically SB 54. Like many residents of California, I'm very upset over California's sanctuary state policy and SB 54. I'm here to voice my anger at my state government, and according to us, the Oceanside City Council state their official position regarding SB 54. Perhaps the city has made an official statement, but I could not find anything on record. On April 4th, the City Council of Escondido elected to join the DOJ lawsuit against the state of California, per PBS. The Escondido City voted 4-1 in favor of adopting the resolution to join the Trump administration's lawsuit against California's so-called sanctuary state. The council decided to file a legal brief to support the lawsuit, which challenges the legality of three state laws enacted last year. Among them is a statute that limits cooperation between local law enforcement and federal immigration authorities. I want to salute Mayor Sam Abed and his councilman, John Masson, who brought this forward. Per Mayor Sam Abed, the sanctuary law passed by the state legislature and signed by Governor Jerry Brown last year is a result of politically, ethically, and morally corrupt leadership. Per Fox News, Mission Viejo City Council voted to file amicus brief. Orange County supervisors have joined in. Huntington Beach City Council voted to become part of the courtroom fight against the city council. Los Alamoses have voted to exempt themselves from the policy. San Diego Board of Supervisors is voting next week. Per Diane Jacobs, a supervisor, she expects the vote to go 3-2 in favor of getting out of the sanctuary city policy and joining the lawsuit against the state of California. More cities are joining the fight every day to protect their residents. I want the City of Oceanside to be on that list. The City of Oceanside is home to the Marine Base Camp Pendleton. This is a great honor and requires respect for the rule of law, while our brave men and women fight to preserve our country and constitutional rights, insane politicians are trying to destroy our country and state. I want you to know, this is really hard to do, but I'm so in, I feel so personal about this, because I'm a native California resident, and I care so much about this state. What you may not know, we celebrated Caesar Chavez's birthday on March 31st. How many people know that he was adamantly against illegal immigration? He went to the border with his brother and fought illegals coming into this state, because he knew it was going to lower wages for the farmworkers who were here. He fought to protect farmworkers. I'm fighting to protect California and my city and my state. And I brought you all kinds of supporting documents. Thank you for your time, and I hope you'll read it and make a statement soon. Yes?
Oh, you can continue. I'm so sorry, I was going to make an announcement. Did you have something?
No, no, I think my time's up.
Yeah, your time's up.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Fowler. You're the only person on this city council I heard back from when I requested a response. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who are wishing to speak on items off of the agenda? Deputy Mayor Lowry informed me that there was. Now would be the time to submit your paper for that. Are you here to speak on items off of the agenda? Mr. David Fears.
My name is David Fears, Oceanside resident. I came to a council meeting a few weeks ago and heard a woman ranting about Councilmember Chuck Lowry. Personally, I find it kind of childish to resort to personalizing and attacking someone, you know, as adults. That's just how I feel as a resident and as a person. So when I got home, I looked up a little history on Mr. Lowry, and remembered I'd seen him around town actually doing what he's supposed to be doing in terms of his job. I found an article from the San Diego Union Tribune saying that Deputy Mayor Lowry used the least landscape and household water of all water officials in the entire county. I think that's noteworthy of leading by example to everyone who lives in and outside of Oceanside. I read about Mr. Lowry's efforts to clean up our ocean and beaches by promoting the plastic bag regulations. I'm always so happy to see less garbage all over the place. Sometimes I forget to bring a bag with me, so you might see me with an armload of items, groceries, and everything walk into my car when I have bags in the car and forgot them. This week is the Oceanside Earth Fair. I saw Chuck at that event a couple of years ago, planting a tree with a bunch of kids right down there on Pure View Way. What a positive image and a positive message to give our community. Just three weeks ago, I visited the Thursday Day Market downtown, right over here, to get out of the house and enjoy some sunshine. I ran into Councilmember Lowry shopping for local fresh veggies, and we stopped and chatted for a few moments. How refreshing to encounter an elected official who cares about supporting our local farmers and does his own shopping in public. I also noticed him packing his organic carrots and broccoli in his saddlebags on his bicycle. I guess that's one way to stop global warming and easily find a parking space. Rather than coming to these meetings and yelling at people who disagree with you, I suggest that people take a look inside and see what they can do to make things better. It's obviously that Deputy Mayor Lowry is doing the job I hired him to do, and I want to give him my full support when he runs for reelection this year. I live in District 1, and I know I'll be voting for him, and so will my neighbors. Thank you very much for your time.
At this time, I see no more speakers on this item. Yes, I remember, oh, City Attorney.
Item 27 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 29A of the Oceanside City Code to require all commercial service providers to obtain a permit from the Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District.
Move adoption? No public on this item.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Item Number 28, City Attorney.
Item 28 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, amending Articles 4, 13, 14, and 36 of the 1992 zoning ordinance, and amending Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City Code to regulate commercial medical cannabis facilities.
We have 10 speakers on this item. We'll move forward. I'll call you forward two at a time. The podiums are on both sides. You'll be able to speak when the green light starts. You'll then have one minute when the yellow light is up, and then when the red light hits, there'll be a sound, and that'll be your time to end. First two speakers are Robin Goodkind and Steve Torano.
My name's Steve Torano, and I live in San Diego County. Let's ask a question. Why is Esther Sanchez running for election this year? Councilmember Sanchez still has over two years left in office. She has slashed and burned almost 20 years on the Oceanside City Council. That's right, at the end of her current term, in 2020, it will be 20 painful years. I understand what Ms. Sanchez told a friend of mine a few months ago. She told her, "It's my job to rile people up. That way, I know I'm getting things done." Now she's decided to run this year for another four years, making it a total of 22 years. What about...
Mr. Torano, can I just interject? I apologize. You still have 2 minutes 15 seconds. I just want to remind yourself and also the entire public, I forgot to mention this before, there is a decorum policy that we do have in the City of Oceanside to refrain from attacking councilmembers directly. They'll have a chance to respond, but I apologize because I didn't note that at the very beginning.
Okay, my question is, is this attacking, or am I just...
It's your comments. I'm not...
Let's stay on topic.
Staying on topic.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, I just, I just want to make sure I disclose that, so, continue.
Okay. Well, now she's decided to run this year for another four years, making it a total of 22 years. My question is, is Ms. Sanchez, have you ever considered voluntary term limits? I mean, really, enough is enough. Is this a lifelong job like the Supreme Court? No, it's local city council, and that's all it is. It's not a career position. I need to know why Esther Sanchez is running for election this year. She does not need to run at all. She still has two more years left. I mean...
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying, but it's nothing to do with the topic that we're discussing. If you wanted to say something like that, you could have put items on the agenda. We are on Item 28, so please talk to the item.
Okay, well, like I said, it's my concern that, you know, Ms. Sanchez is not in favor of cannabis. So that is of major concern to me, because it's how I'm going to make my living.
Just stay on topic, then.
Well, my topic is, is, you know, she's been on council for 20 years, she's got another two years. Why is she running for reelection? And I just think it'd be good if we had some people who were a little more progressive at this stage in the game. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Robin Goodkind, Oceanside resident. Starting next week, I'll be a city planning commissioner, but tonight, I'm speaking only for myself and my mom, Sandy. Sandy loves life. She's quite adventurous. She's traveled to some interesting places like China, Croatia, and Africa on her own. She loves to visit her six grandkids and her one great-grandson. Like many seniors, my mom Sandy suffers from chronic painful arthritis, making it difficult in recent years to travel and exercise as much as she'd like. Anyone who has chronic pain knows the vicious cycle. If you can't exercise, your health gets worse, you get depressed, all of that causes more pain. My mom has used every painkiller on the market, and the older she got, the more the conventional drugs failed. Last year, her doctor prescribed medical cannabis to be used along with tramadol, and within days, something magical happened. 80% of her pain went away. She was able to go back to the gym, and she started traveling again. Recently, mom visited me, and she forgot her cannabis. I had to scramble to find a safe product. If there had been even one dispensary in Oceanside, within hours, we could have bought the medicine that she needed without worrying about quality. Last time, I checked California as a democracy, and I think the people voted to give my mom and everyone who needs it safe access to medical cannabis. The law you passed two weeks ago does not do this, and therefore ignores the people's will. I urge you, please, to include dispensaries in this law now, and tell the black market you are not welcome in Oceanside. Thank you for your time.
Our next two speakers are Gloria... Our next two speakers are Gloria Ryan and Amber Newman.
My name is Gloria Ryan. Oceanside is my home. I need safe access to medicinal cannabis. I do not want unknown persons delivering products I cannot trust or do not have the knowledge to direct me in making the right choice for my health challenges. Dispensaries are a valued resource, not a place just to get medicine. State of California requires these hands-on compassionate care facilities. They provide a place to help those in need. Prayer is awesome, but it won't help me make informed medical choices. I donated my time on the City Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee because I realized quality of life is a gift. Every day, one of you, every one of you will die someday. I had a promise of five more years to live and a reoccurrence of cancer. Do you decision-makers truly hear us pleading for safe access? Your regulation blocks my access to medicine right now. I'm not looking for recreation, Councilwoman Feller. Neither are the kids who are having hundreds of seizures suffering every day. It is absolutely wrong to spend a painful 18 to 24 months waiting for Police Chief McCoy to decide when I can have safe access to my pain meds and medicine that will add time and quality to my life. It is the responsibility of Mayor White to implement rules to allow me to secure the medicine I need. This is no party, Councilwoman Sanchez. I know people who have died, we all do, of cancer, but some of us choose to use non-toxic cannabis rather than screaming in pain while our disease eats us alive. I do not want your opiates or other pharma drugs that will give me cancer and take my quality of life on the years I have left. I demand that tonight's vote include dispensaries now, not sometime in the future. You councilmembers can vote to make life more comfortable for the kids. Is your personal prejudice, your unwillingness to hear our cries going to help you sleep better at night? I love that people want to keep kids safe, but what about those of us that want to stay alive? Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow.
I would ask if you could hold your applause, please.
Amber Newman. Okay, so, you know, people say that something is better than nothing. It's a start. Sometimes that might be true, but that's not one of these times. Our phone has been ringing off the hook since the last meeting with people trying to make heads or tails out of what you did. It pains me every time I have to tell them that after working on this issue here for more than two years, the city passed a stall tactic. For anyone thinking this compromise is anything other than a two-year ban, our mayor recently stated on KBPS that it will be 18 to 12 months or longer before any licensees would be operational. For our farmers, that means that you will miss the next two to three outdoor growing seasons. Manufacturers and labs, our staff has locked you all into the same zoning that currently, from what I understand, has about a 2.1% vacancy rate. So y'all get to fight over about the three buildings available that will meet the setbacks. When it comes to the patients, we don't need to explain anything to them. They know they got screwed. They know that without dispensaries, they've once again been left to fend for themselves in the black market that our very own Chief of Police sat here and encouraged you to solidify because he needs more time to research something that has been legal in this state for more than 20 years. Who exactly is running the show here anyway? In the last two years, there's not been a single cannabis vote that has left these chambers in complete and utter silence that we heard the other night, and that was very telling. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for someone who has stated you are interested in avoiding a citizen initiative, you're off to a pretty rocky start. And Ms. Sanchez, as someone who is running for office this year and at least seems to understand the importance of the cannabis vote, don't think for even one second that supporting a medical marijuana ordinance that does not provide medical marijuana access to those who need it makes you cannabis-friendly. That is not a flag that you will be able to carry into this next campaign season. Believe that. I urge our council to reject this pitiful attempt at appeasement. Our residents have asked for better. They deserve better and one way or another, they're going to get better. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Dave Newman and Michael Milano.
Dave Newman, Fire Mountain. After months of work, not only by ourselves, but the Oceanside Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee, the Oceanside City Council majority decided to vote in favor of medical marijuana regulations that actually continue the ban on real safe access to medical marijuana in the city. I can't help but ask this council, how in the world does that happen? Oh, that's right, we can't immediately tax the medically ill because adding a cannabis tax to the ballot would interfere with your half-cent sales tax initiative. It seems a bit heartless to continue sending our patients to the black market, which apparently has just been given an extension to operate in our city and our neighborhoods, selling untested product to anyone with a fistful of cash. Why does Chief McCoy need a year or longer in order to investigate medical marijuana dispensaries? The state of California legalized medical marijuana in 1996. Our own state has one of the oldest medical marijuana dispensaries in the country. But I guess furthering the failed war on drugs continues to remain a priority in our public service division, which is why we need to vote Dave Myers for county sheriff. Needless to say, the majority of your constituents are not in agreement with your version of safe access. Nothing was accomplished. And this reminds me of a recent social media comment that said, "Oceanside's new medical marijuana ordinance resembles the Moonwalk." It looks like you're moving forward when in fact, you're going backward. Two or three years ago, Amber and I stood here to oppose the city's delivery ordinance because it was nothing more than a carrot meant to appease the masses, pump your chest and tout, "We now have safe access." It turned out to be the flop we expected with Swiss cheese-sized holes that allowed for easy manipulation. And now we stand here once again to urge the council to reject yet another medical marijuana ordinance. And why? Because it's not 1930, it's not 1970, it's 2018 and we will not bend when people's lives and well-being are at stake. We ask you to stand with the patients of all ages, from children to elderly, stand with the voters of Oceanside in solidarity and reject the ordinance tonight. Work with us so that we may bring real safe access to our city. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Milano, Oceanside resident, 442 Ener's Court. I just want to thank you guys for all the work you put into this ordinance and on behalf of the Farm Bureau and the farming community in Oceanside, thank you. It's something that's really going to help us as we can develop commercial cultivation moving forward in the city. Look forward to working with the staff on navigating how to actually execute this, but we feel that we can work it through. So I appreciate all the work. Thank you guys very much.
Our next two speakers are Chris Glasgow and Joel Weisberger.
Councilmembers, my name is Chris. I just would kind of like to present this to you where two weeks ago, we were cast with the opportunity to build a bridge between the will of the patients and where we stand now. And if I were to come up here and show you the blueprints for a plan of a bridge that didn't reach the very end, I don't think that you would say, "Let's build that bridge." And I think that that's a good representation of what this law is. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Weisberger. I'm here on behalf of the San Diego County Farm Bureau. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for helping the farmers out in Moro Hills and allowing them the opportunity to keep their farms profitable. One thing I'd like to ask you to consider is to waive the 1,000-foot setback and the one license per APN number. Moro Hills is a pretty small agricultural area and it would kind of create a first-come, first-served situation. So I think for everyone to be able to benefit and the farmers to partake in cultivating cannabis, taking those things out of the ordinance would be extremely beneficial. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Alan Fritz and Jimmy Knott.
Good evening. My name is Alan Fritz. I own CMA Growers, a wholesale nursery in South Moro Hills, area of Oceanside. I want to thank you for voting to approve the latest regulations regarding cannabis cultivation in Oceanside. I also appreciate your votes, your votes enabling my business to start the planning to move forward into cannabis cultivation. It allows myself and other legacy growers in the area to continue our farms with a hopeful outlook. There are two concerns I have regarding moving forward. The first is the separation requirement, which requires a 1,000-foot separation between facilities. This 1,000-foot separation would unfairly advantage those who initially get permits and would eliminate the opportunity for those in the future. If given a reduced separation, the land could be used much more efficiently and reduce our cost and security utilities, et cetera. Another concern I have is the M license, which I've learned a lot more about recently. And I have to tell you, I do have a concern. As many of you might know, medical cannabis is a small shrinking percentage of the market. More of it, it's basically about 90% adult and 10% medical. So I do have a concern when investing in my agricultural nursery operation, which is 40 acres. We could only get in a 1,000-foot setback, one, possibly two, 22,000 square foot facilities on 40 acres, which is six lots. If we were able to cultivate under M and A, there would be no difference to the appearance, security, or regulations affecting cultivation. With only a medical market, we would not be able to move forward with any certainty that we would recoup our investment. We would like to save Oceanside farming and employ more people. We cannot do this with these two restrictions in place. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. What you see there is very simple. My doctor has me checked a couple of times a year for any type of cannabis use. And what happens is, I can say I am clean. There's everything else. But I do support the use for those who need medical marijuana and I also support their access. It's needed. But a lot of the time is that you put up roadblocks to them in order to let them get what they need or if you do, you make it so costly for some of our seniors. You need to remove those barriers. I've been advocate for seniors for the last 30 years. You know I have. You need to help them. Please open those doors. I also take and I want to know, I want you to clarify your direction to Chief McCoy. When is the report really due back? And what input? From whom? And will it be a report that has bias? The council needs to have a report that you put parameters in. And the question is, what type of report will the chief give you? And what is that input that he's going to put into that report? It should be fair, balanced, honest and truthful. And will it also include the results and differentiations between the two primary constituents of cannabis? The mood elevator, THC? The miracle wonder drug, CBD? Will he also bring back the results from the holistic medicine area as well as conventional medicine? Because a lot of the other government municipalities are blind to the holistic area and they determined it only on conventional medicine, which is regulated by the federal government and they basically deny them the funds that they need because it is a regulated drug. You need to take that into consideration on those municipalities. There's other things to say, but those are a few things for you to consider and please answer.
Our next two speakers are Robin Lynn and Sheila Kada.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Robin. I'm a business owner here in Oceanside. After a year of discussing safe access for adults, and I want to emphasize the word adults, not children, it was a huge disappointment that the dispensary and delivery service businesses were struck from the ordinance put forth on March 28th. As happened two years ago, the adults are once again left without solid local options for purchasing quality, legally regulated products from locally owned professional businesses. It's clear that medical dispensaries and delivery services were removed because the city and community have severe fears of what they believe they are going to get, namely pot shops. The Ad Hoc Committee... Excuse me while I switch. The Ad Hoc Committee spent a lot of time. They proposed what is far from the typical unlicensed and unregulated pot shop. What they proposed is something similar to what you see on the screen. It was crafted to represent a very sensible approach to balancing the needs of the community with the fears and it is absolutely achievable without being a blight on the image of the City of Oceanside. Do we want to protect the children? Yes, we all do. What we've been trying to convey this past year as an industry is that regulation is absolutely necessary to achieve that goal. Denying adults' access will not make children safer. Regulating the business of dispensing will be one step of many in the right direction toward that. Do proponents of safe access want to normalize cannabis? Yes, we do. It's a plant. It's rooted in human history for its medicinal qualities and adults who choose it over dangerous and addictive drugs prescribed by doctors should not be relegated to being labeled a stoner or an addict. Nor should they have to conduct business in the shadows, drive hours away or settle for non-state regulated quality products. The council, two weeks ago, supported the industry but not the people. I once again urge you, on behalf of hundreds of adults in Oceanside and surrounding communities, to put dispensaries or at the very least, type 9 delivery services back into the ordinance and bring safe, professional, distinguished access to the people of Oceanside. Thank you very much.
Sheila Kada, Oceanside, California. I too am for medical marijuana and dispensaries in Oceanside, but I want it to be done right. I want it to be done so that the people of Oceanside, the small farmers and everybody, benefit from it. I do not like the 1,000-foot setback because that hurts the small farmer and makes it advantageous for the larger farmer, so I'm against that. They said, Amber said that they've been working on the Ad Hoc Committee for two years. So why didn't they do something about the tax, get it on the ballot to get the tax? That's the number one thing they should have done in my book. Also, I want to make it clear that Esther Sanchez, at one time, she brought forward to have limitations on, I'm very nervous because you made me mad. You accused her of, you know, term limits or something. She brought that forward and nobody else would second it. She brought that forward. Do you know that she got with our waste management to give Ocean... She worked on zero waste and she worked for bringing a lot of money to Oceanside. You need to get your facts straight. And the reason she's running for it is because tons of people have asked her to run again.
All right, I'm just going to take a moment, real quick, just to remind everyone. I know some other speakers came in after I made the announcement earlier. We do have a decorum policy in the city council, so if you could just please refrain from attacking council, going after the public. I know we want to get everyone's ideas out there. It's important. This is a democracy and we want to have free speech, but if we just do so in a respectful manner, that'd be great. Appreciate all you guys. Our next two speakers are Michelle McKechnie and Michelle Keeler. Thanks so much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, council and mayor. Once again, we obviously want to say thank you for the steps that you have taken in the right direction. But obviously, the reason why we're all here is because there's still a huge fight in front of us. When you talk to us, you say that you want to help the citizens of Oceanside, that you understand their pain. But do you really? Have you taken the time to really investigate? Looked on the internet, done some research, listened to people? People aren't going to be coming to you. People in pain that are at home, ladies and gentlemen, they're dealing with pain. They need us. Every day when I go into my store, I deal with people that come in that are dealing with epilepsy, who are dealing with chronic pain. And they have told me their stories over and over again. I hear those stories every day. And if you can open up your hearts, open up your minds, take the time to do the research... take the time to do the research, you would see how important it is to have safe access. Those of you who said that the delivery model that you provide, the delivery model that allows me to have a business here in Oceanside, is providing access, that is true. It is providing access, but ladies and gentlemen, there are many restrictions on the access that you know you put in there. You also realize that with all of that, whatever delivery comes in here, the taxes go to Santa Ana. They don't come to the city of Oceanside. We talk about needing money for public safety. Well, why not allow the taxes that you're allowing at this point to actually benefit the city of Oceanside? Instead, you allow patients here in Oceanside to pay a 6% medical fee, a 7.75 municipal tax, and a 15% excise tax that all goes to the city of Santa Ana or any other licensed city that allows a delivery service here. We need money. The citizens of Oceanside obviously want public safety. It is a concern of theirs. Why would you deny them that access? You don't need an extra tax involved. It would be nice to add one, but you don't need one right now to get the benefits from allowing licensed cannabis deliveries or dispensaries here in Oceanside. Also, ladies and gentlemen, it's a great move to give those licenses to those companies that you're talking about, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, but where are they going to sell their product? You've allowed them only to have medical. When I look at my store, we have adult and recreational, adult medicinal. 10% of our consumer base is medicinal at this point. So you're asking a dispensary to buy from a cultivator, a manufacturer, distributor, who can only produce or provide for 10% of our customer base? That's going to be a hard sale, ladies and gentlemen. So if we want to help the citizens of Oceanside, if you want to help the farmers, then you need to give them access. You need to give them someplace where they can distribute their product, and that is why it's so important to have these dispensaries and these M9 licenses in Oceanside, so Oceanside can benefit. Absolutely, people can call me up, ladies and gentlemen, but are they willing to pay the 30, almost 30% extra fee that they have to pay in taxes and everything else when they can still go on weed maps and find a delivery that won't charge them that? Because there has been no enforcement, because there is no money. Oceanside needs money, and they need you to do it by allowing dispensaries so that you can collect municipal taxes, part of the excise taxes, and be proud of the businesses that you allow here. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Michelle Keeler, 734 Wilshire Road. I also want to thank you all for the work that took place, especially Councilmember Kern and Deputy Mayor Lowry, who spent a ton of time and a ton of work on this. We really appreciate your dedication. As a commercial grower, I want to speak to something that I can speak about, which is the thousand-foot setback, and we really encourage you to reconsider that. The way I understand it, in speaking with Deanna, the staff recommended that because that was the ad hoc committee's recommendation. However, in speaking to the ad hoc committee's recommendation, the thousand-foot setback, the idea was more for the dispensaries, which makes sense, you don't put a liquor store next door to a liquor store, and somehow that got blanketed into the cultivation as well. I'd really like to, for you to consider, I'm sorry, for reconsidering that. It doesn't make sense from a grower for that thousand-foot setback. There's all kinds of issues, as people brought up before, that's kind of a first-come, first-serve. If I put it on my property, at my property line, I'll set a thousand feet into your property, and that may prevent you from being able to get a license. In addition, for commercial growers like ourselves, you're telling us where on our property we have to locate it versus us working with the city to determine what the best location for that is. As a commercial grower also, it's completely disruptive to the agriculture that's out there, and people keep saying that this is an opportunity to mix agriculture and have agritourism, the agriculture that's out there. For our flower farm, if you told us we had to put that grow right in the middle of our flower farm, and with the security and the road and the access, it totally disrupts the agriculture in place. So I really encourage you to consider some of those restrictions, especially the thousand-foot setback. I don't think it's accomplishing what you think it is going to accomplish. I think when you talk about dispensaries, absolutely, but when you talk about agriculture, I really encourage you to talk to the farmers and understand that that's probably worse for the cultivation than not. Thank you so much.
Our next two speakers are Jim Jenkins and Judy Strang.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Jim Jenkins, Rancher Del Oro. First of all, I'd like to applaud the council for their decision they most recently made on this topic. I think it was great. I hear the words in here, "fair, balanced, and reasonable." I think Chief McCoy and also the Fire Department's decision to look into this in further detail is very important. You know, all their careers are taught about avoiding that rush in attitude, learn to fall back, rethink, size things up before they just go right in. And I think there are time that needs to be spent on this is very important. When it comes down to, you know, I'm for this, and I think that it is readily available right now for people to have it delivered, so it is there, available at this time while this additional time is spent looking into this. And I think that the item about "fair, balanced, and reasonable," that should have been considered when it came to forming this ad hoc committee, because if these individuals were part of that ad hoc committee, maybe a lot of this would have been worked out. But since they weren't part of it, they had no input, and I think that's important. So, you know, I think what they're requesting is important. These people are leaders in law and fire, and if we don't respect their input, then why are they in these positions? So I think what's happening here is important, and I applaud your decision last council meeting, and also for giving the time that's needed to look into this further detail. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Judy Strang, Terracina. I'm here to speak on behalf of parents, and I concur with having a more balanced approach if the ad hoc committee had been balanced to begin with. I'm also concerned, because I was at a PTA meeting yesterday, and they asked me about the time that this item would be heard tonight, and I said, "Well, it says public hearing, 6:00." And at least one parent said to me, "Well, that's good, because I'm coming from soccer, and I won't get there till 6:30, but there's a lot of speakers, so I'm sort of nervous. I've misled people." I'd also like to say that when Prop 215 passed in 1996, safe access occurred and still occurs, and in the spirit of that, you adopted delivery ordinance that would allow patients and caregivers to have their marijuana delivered to the patients. And I thought that was a respectful thing to do. To take it one further step and move it into a pot shop realm, I think is unfortunate because that's exactly what parents have been most concerned about, commercialization and normalization and promotion. I also wanted to mention about taxing, should you go there, that taxes occur at the site of the transaction. So if the transaction occurs in Oceanside, then Oceanside collects the taxes. I think the idea of being cautious is really important because the two departments that are in the state of California that are responsible for the regulations, one, the California Department of Public Health, that has regulations for manufacturing, are in a draft form, a 99-page draft form, and the Department of Agriculture is in charge of cultivation, again, in a very draft form. They are only issuing temporary permits. They are not set up at this point to do enforcement or follow-up or examination and have no capacity to see what's being processed, grown, sold, so we need a lot of caution. I'd also like to point out that in a recent article in the LA Times, they talked about California producing eight times the pot that was consumed in the state. The "they" wasn't the media, the "they" was the state pot growers. So I ask, where is all the extra pot going that you're going to grow here in Oceanside? And do we really want to be part of the shipping of pot from Oceanside to other states who are not interested in having it? Is that really wise? I mean, 70% of the cities in California are not going to have marijuana businesses, be they retail, cultivation, or manufacturing. Thank you.
How many more speakers are there? What I'd like to do is go to the public hearing item, which was time-certain, and come back to this after that.
Okay.